Okay. Good evening. This is the Thursday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three Shrewsbury Planning Board Meeting. As a result of some Steve Boulay's resignation from the board, I am the acting chairman tonight. And I'm accompanied by Mr. Rao, Perna Rao, and Jay Thomas, one of our members who was otherwise unavailable, has called in, so now we have a quorum. So I would call this meeting to order. We have a number of continuances tonight. We only have one hearing on a existing permitting matter that is going forward. That's seven IRA have as well as the subzoning amendments, proposed zoning amendments, for which this board is going to be tasked with deciding whether to recommend or not to recommend a town meeting. So I guess first order of business, I would ask the board to take a look at the November third, two thousand and twenty-two minutes of that November meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review them?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I guess, any comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the November two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the November second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting as proposed by the chair.
That would be November third, Jay.
Oh, I'm sorry, November third, November third. I'm sorry.
I second.
Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record reflect that Mr. Thomas was in favor. He's not here. And Mr. Perna and myself were in favor. Okay. We have any bills this month?
We do not.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, any comments this month?
I have no comments this month, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I have, I have no comments either, Mr. Chairman.
And I have no comments either. Okay, we're gonna do the continuances next. Chris?
Yes.
Do we have letters from the applicants?
We do, from each of them.
Okay, so the first hearing that the applicant's gonna seek to continue is Saint John's High School for the proposed Wellness Center site plan approval. And the applicant has submitted a letter. I would entertain a motion on the applicant's request to continue to the June first, two thousand and twenty-three hearing, meeting at seven PM, keeping in mind that we haven't opened the hearing or read the legal notice. Do I have a motion?
I move that we continue the proposed Wellness Center site plan approval for Saint John's, for Saint John's School of Western New Public Hearing, three seventy-eight Main Street till June, is it third?
June first.
June first, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM.
I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor as well, so let the record reflect it was unanimous. Okay. The next, next continuance is for site plan approval. Thirty Floral Street Edgar Muntz, that's the schoolhouse, Little Beginnings. And we have a letter from the applicant?
Correct, we do.
Okay, and again, we haven't opened up the public hearing because we haven't read the legal notice. But I would entertain a motion to continue that hearing until June first, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM.
I move that we continue the proposed parking site plan approval at Muntz New Public Hearing, thirty Floral Street, to our June first, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting at seven PM.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well. Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Okay, the next hearing, which again, we're not gonna open up and which I have a conflict, but for the purposes, we're not opening it up, I'm just disclosing my conflict. We're just continuing it, and that will be the only action that I would be taking. And we have a letter from the applicant?
We do.
Okay, then, this is for Polito Development Corporation, two forty Cherry Street, and its proposed parking site plan approval. And I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing on this matter until Thursday, June first, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM. Do I have a motion?
I, I move that we continue the proposed parking site plan approval for Polito Development Corporation, new public hearing, at location two forty Cherry Street, to the June first, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting at seven PM.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor as well. Let the record reflect that the vote was unanimous. Okay, our next public hearing is the proposed two-family conversion special permit. Do we have Dino on the line?
We do not yet. I have sent out an email. I don't have his phone number listed.
Okay, you wanna just do the zoning amendments?
Move over and come back to this item.
All right, then, again, this one here, next one, there's a request to continue. Shrewsbury Land Property Owner, four forty Hartford Turnpike, again, I have a conflict on this. But I guess because of the doctrine of necessity that we will continue, we're not, we haven't opened up the public hearing on that yet.
This one we have.
We have opened up the public hearing, okay. Then again, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on four forty Hartford Turnpike, which is site plan approval until June first, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM.
I move that we continue the proposed warehouse and distribution facility site plan approval. Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, four forty Hartford Turnpike, to our June first, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting at seven PM.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor as well. Let the record reflect that was unanimous. Okay, I guess we'll move on to our zoning warrant articles for the annual town meeting.
Yes, thank you. So I'll start with the two continued warrant articles. So we have Article fifty-one for the non-gasoline sales footnote. We've, you know, discussed this, I think, a couple times. We've had two hearings on this. This proposal is seeking to remove the footnote from the zoning bylaw in regards to the non-gasoline sales associated with retail, so that there's a three thousand square foot limit on any additional retail associated with a gasoline sales service station. Again, I won't go at much length. I know there's been some discussion on it, but this is looking at, you know, providing additional abilities for non-gasoline sales to co-locate with those in the Route twenty over there.
It seems to make sense.
Yes, it does.
It doesn't, you know, that's not their business model, so. Mr. Thomas, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I agree. In today's business model, it's more about selling soda and, and things of that nature than it is the gas. So that, I think it makes sense for this zoning article to be brought forward in today's world.
Okay. Mr. Rao?
I agree with Mr. Thomas and the rest of the board here that it, this, this needs to be changed.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion that we recommend Article fifty-one, Section six, non-gasoline sales footnote to the upcoming May fifteenth town meeting.
Perna, would you make that motion?
Okay.
You can say so moved.
Yeah, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well, so let the record reflect that it was unanimous, that. Okay, Article fifty-two, Section two and Section six, adult day, day health definition.
Thank you. So this is Article fifty-two, proposing to add a definition for adult day health into the zoning bylaw, as well as to allow it within the use table. What this does is this provides for alternative to full stay nursing home facilities. What this would be is, you know, a facility where adults can go and receive some, you know, medical service, but also socialization, and it allows that, but then they would return home and not stay full time. We see this as a service that we have been approached by businesses. This provides some clarity within the zoning bylaw in order to promote and encourage these uses to locate in town. We see this as a need in town to better promote that and a benefit to the community for aging in place and other initiatives.
Okay, I like the prior article. I think this is the new business model. You know, nursing homes are closing left and right in the Commonwealth, and they're just, I don't think they're sustainable. So this is something I'd be in favor of, but Mr. Thomas, what are your thoughts?
I agree with your sentiments, Steve. I, I think you see these central mass more and more often now popping up all over the place compared to, like you said, with the nursing homes being not as prevalent. So I think this is good. I think this would be a good change, and I would be in favor of this.
Okay. Mr. Rao?
I'd be in favor of this along with both of my board members. I think the model is changing, and it's something that will help this particular group. So I'll be in favor of recommending this article to the annual town meeting.
Great, then I would entertain a, a motion that we recommend Article number fifty-two, Section Roman numeral number two and Roman numeral number six, adult day health definition, to the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, town meeting.
I move Article number fifty-two, Section two and Section six, adult day health definition to the annual town meeting on May fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm in favor as, as well, so let the record reflect that the recommendation was unanimous. Okay, the next two zoning articles, I have conflict, but because of the quorum issues, I discussed with the appointing authority, the town manager, and we made a disclosure. Disclosure was filed with the town clerk relative to my conflicts. So I'm gonna participate in these matters, obviously, based, and will make a determination based on the merits. First is Article fifty-three, Section Roman numeral number seven, commercial equipment rental.
Thank you. So this proposal is to include a definition for commercial equipment rental, as well as to provide for it in the zoning bylaw, Section seven and three A, to be line seven therein, and then some minor renumbering. What this proposes is, again, the definition for commercial rental equipment. This proposal, it is pretty clear in the, in the definition what it's proposing. These are, you know, smaller scale equipment rental in line with forklifts and other smaller scale, low intensity, commercial equipment. And we see this as a benefit to that corridor to provide for additional retail opportunities. Again, this is by providing the definition in there and a clearer regulatory path. We see this as a way of encouraging these uses in town and providing better regulatory control of them as well.
Mrs. Thomas, do you have any thoughts on this?
I think it's, I, I think again, well, like the other articles, I think you see more and more of these commercial equipment rental places popping up around town, so I think it would be good to have better regulations on how we govern them or just different uses on them. So I would be in favor of this article.
Mr. Rao?
I agree with my board member, Mr. Thomas. I think it will help the town and the commercial businesses, retail. So I'll be in favor of recommending this article to the annual town meeting.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion that we recommend Article fifty-three, Section Roman numeral number seven, relative to the definition of commercial equipment rental to town meeting.
I move that Article number fifty-three, Section Roman numeral seven, commercial equipment rental be recommended to the annual town meeting on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so let the record reflect that that recommendation was unanimous. The next is Article fifty-four, Roman numeral number seven, battery energy storage facilities.
Thank you. So this Article fifty-four is proposing to modify our large-scale, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation bylaw in order to include a definition for battery energy storage facilities, as well as small-scale battery systems, to better define those and to include those in the zoning bylaw. We see this as a way of promoting this emerging technology. We see it as a way of also regulating that and providing for, again, that clear regulatory path for implementing it. We have included in this, we have had some input from Selco with some minor additions, which we went through. I'm in favor of those proposed after review. I think they strengthen the bylaw. The one exception I would have is that in the proposal to change the use table, I do believe that the limited business district should be allowed. However, the rural A and rural B zoning districts, in my opinion, would zone for a too large of a area within Shrewsbury. There may be ability to expand that in the future, but I think the proposal to include just the limited business would be reasonable for now, and then moving into that potentially in the future. The rural, rural districts are largely residential, and I have some concerns about co-locating so close in them. The other, we did receive an additional comment in terms of the setback provisions, requesting a change to that language, where currently it, when the solar facility or battery energy storage facilities as written, they co-locate in a zone next to a residential zone. It increases all setbacks to fifty feet. The request is to adjust that to be just the setback that is adjacent to the residential zone. So for example, if it's on one or two sides residential, but on the other two sides, commercial or industrial, they could retain the commercial-industrial setback on those sides, but require the larger setbacks on the residential zoned setback sides.
This, this seems to make sense, because unlike, you know, a solar project, which is, takes up acres. You know, the, these battery projects are much smaller, and we don't wanna lose valuable commercial-industrial space because of setbacks. And, you know, this is an opportunity for Selco to potentially save the ratepayers a significant amount of money through, I'm not gonna say the word manipulation, but use of pricing, the ability to use stored energy during peak usage times such that it benefits from the pricing of ISO New England, as has been explained to me. So I, this is something I'd be in favor of. I share Mr. McGoldrick's concerns about, I'm generally in favor of solar, but I have concerns that if you include it in the rez, in the rural districts, that it may not pass town meeting. And I think it's more important that we start off and get this passed at town meeting, at least in the limited business and the other districts where the use is allowed. Those are my thoughts. Mr. Thomas, do you have any thoughts?
I agree with what you're saying. I think that we have to be careful about where, to begin with at least, of where we allow these places to set up. I think it's great for Selco, it could be great for the town, us residents of the town and taxpayers and electric users, but I do agree with yours and Mr. McGoldrick's points of somewhat being careful for, to begin with, of where we put them, see how it goes, and then in the future, if we wanna expand into different zones, we could. But I think for right now, the way it's being explained is, is the right way to do it. So I would be in favor of the way that has been said at this meeting.
So my question is, is the article written like the way we want it to be at this stage, or do we need to modify it?
So I would be proposing the, the modifications as proposed by Selco and the minor edits that I had suggested as well, and I'm happy to, to submit those. That, that would be included in the memo that will be sent out to town meeting members.
Town meeting is gonna have two alternatives to consider?
No, so, so, so what I would propose, if it's the board's pleasure, is to include the provisions. I'm happy to, to include with my own minor edits, the edits that were proposed by Selco, again, with the exception of including the rural districts. That would be my proposals, to send that forward.
And you're gonna make the edit about the setbacks?
Correct, the setbacks.
Just for batteries?
Yep.
Just for batteries, not, not for solar, just for batteries.
And then the one other edit, which I failed to mention, was in terms of the fire protection, citing Regulation NFPA eight fifty-five, just kinda diving into that very briefly. That's the National Fire Protection Agency Administration. That's their regulation in terms of fire safety for battery, battery energy storage. What I'm recommending is that we include that language so that it is for the small-scale battery systems that they demonstrate, they'll be allowed by right if they demonstrate compliance with that code. They may have to do that anyways, but by putting it explicitly in the bylaw, it provides additional protection.
Okay, so I'd be in favor of the rural, but I just am concerned that it won't pass if you include it in the rural zones. I just wanna be clear that otherwise I'd be in favor of it, because I'm in favor of solar, but I don't think, I, I have concerns that, you know, based on what I've seen, that other towns have restricted where solar can go and have limited to the commercial-industrial zones. I'd rather see solar than residential development. But hey, I, I'm concerned it won't pass. So I, I concur with Mr. McGoldrick's comments.
Yep.
So I, I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to recommend Article fifty-four, Roman numeral number, Section Roman numeral number seven, battery energy storage facilities, with the taking into account Selco's suggested modifications and our comments there, too.
Yep. I move that Article number fifty-four, Section Roman numeral seven, battery energy storage facilities be recommended to the annual town meeting with Selco comments and edits and fire protection, National Fire Protection Agency edits, as well as the edits that the Planning Board, Mr. McGardlick, suggested to the annual town meeting in, on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do I have a, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor as well, so that, that's unanimous. And what are we gonna do with IRA? I wanna get this thing approved.
I do, too.
So would it be possible, I, I, you're not gonna reach Dino, you need the four votes. Jay, when would you be available to have a real quick meeting? I, I'm sorry that the applicant, we put the applicant through this. When would you be available to have a meeting? Could you do it next week?
I could do it, um, let me see. Um. Does it have to necessarily be Thursday? I mean?
We could do it next Thursday. We don't have to do it at seven o'clock either.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I'm available next Thursday. If, the only thing we're gonna do is IRA, I can, I'm available next Thursday or I'm available next Wednesday.
I, I won't be able to do Wednesday at six thirty, so we'd have to do earlier than that.
I'm available anytime.
Perna, are you available?
I can make staff available to us.
No, but we need Dino, too, right?
Right.
Yeah. So let's have two dates ready, just in case if Dino can't make one.
What do we have to, what's the posted, what's the posted, forty-eight hours, the special?
Yeah, but we do have to continue this hearing to a time and date certain.
Okay, okay, okay. I am available eleventh, as long as it is like, you know, six PM on, or six, seven. Seven would be better for me. I'll be. on six P M. on or six, seven, se- seven would be better for me, I'll be at the state house earlier in the day, so seven P M., eleventh is fine, then on tenth, also like seven P M. should be fine. Or six.
Alright, so why don't, why don't we try to do it on the tenth? Oh, actually, why don't we try to do it on?
What's that?
Why, why don't we do it on Thursday?
Eleventh, yeah.
The, the eleventh.
Yeah. Is that okay with you, Jay?
What's that?
Thursday the eleventh.
Thursday eleventh, okay, it's Dino, correct?
We're gonna find out if it's okay with Dino, but we're gonna have it, I, I gotta give this guy a, a path to move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move that we, uh, assuming you're okay with it. You, you, why don't you come up?
Present?
Sir, yeah, why don't you come up? Why don't I open up the public hearing, cuz he's present?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, this is the, this is the continued, uh, public hearing on the special permit for the two-family conversion. Uh, Tasha Hayden, Seven IRA Avenue, and, uh, sir, if you could just identify yourself?
My name is Steve Alvarez, I'm the applicant and I'm the, uh, consultant and construction advisor.
Okay, and again, Mr. Alvarez, I apologize for our quorum issues. Um, again, uh, I would, uh, you understand that you'd be amenable to a continued hearing on Thursday, uh,
Eleven.
May eleventh at seven P M. In this room, do we got this room?
Um, let me just make sure I can book that.
We're at Town Hall. Can you, s- can you see if we can get that?
Yeah, let me, let me make sure I can book that. Um, I, so I don't have this available, we can do Conference Room A.
We'll do Conference Room A.
That should be fine, yep.
That's, that's this room right here?
Yep.
Make it a one, one item agenda?
One item agenda, special town meeting, Thursday, May eleventh at seven P M. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the special permit for Seven IRA Avenue until Thursday, May eleventh at seven P M. At Meeting Room A in Town Hall.
I propose that the two-family conversion special permit for, uh, Seven IRA Avenue be continued to, uh, May eleventh, Thursday, at Town Hall in Conference Room A.
At seven P M.
At seven P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Rao?
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well. Again, Mr. Alvarez, I apologize for having these quorum issues.
It happens, thank you, I appreciate, uh, the accommodation.
Okay, uh, and now we have, uh, cuz I've new business, I kind of, uh, just stepped into the role as acting chairman, I don't have to be appointed. Uh, just, okay, the next item of business is discuss and vote to send a letter of support regarding climate pollution reduction grant to the EPA on behalf of CMRPC.
Yep, so, um, just very briefly, uh, CMRPC is, uh, pursuing a grant, uh, looking at climate pollution reduction. Um, this is similar to, uh, the process that we're currently doing with our climate action plan. Um, this would provide funding to communities for, uh, pursuit of that. Um, we've already funded that effort and we're working through that process, however, this would also provide potential funding opportunities uh, when we've complete our climate action plan, um, for implementation of the actions that we decide on, um, through that planning process, so we do see this as a, there is a, a, a local benefit, um, to supporting this action, um, but also a larger regional, uh, benefit, um, for other communities as well, so. Um, our recommendation, um, is to provide this letter of support, um, to, uh, uh, CMRPC and the EPA, um, in, in support of their pursuit of this grant opportunity.
I'm in support of that, Mr. Jay.
Yeah, I'd be in support. Mr. Thomas, do you have any thoughts?
I'd be in support of it also.
Okay, so I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion, uh, that, uh, we authorize Mr. McGoldrick to send a letter referencing our vote, uh, to, uh, the climate, uh, to the EPA, uh, uh, on behalf of CMRPC.
I move that, uh, we authorize Mr. McGoldrick to send a letter of support regarding climate pollution reduction grant to EPA on behalf of the central master's, the regional planning commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor as well, let the record reflect that our recommendation was unanimous. And we don't have any old business, correct? No correspondence?
Correct.
Then I would entertain a motion to conclude this evening's public hearings.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Rao?
Aye.
And I'm in favor of as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.